Meeting come to order, have the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. Welcome to the Upper Rochester Board of Commissioners Caucus meeting, January 5th, 2023. We made it. George, can you do roll call, please?
Sure thing. Commissioner Baacko.
Here.
Commissioner Godioso.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
And myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. We're opening up with the phone lines tonight. There are citizens here tonight, so we'll be able to move along. That way, we'll open up this phone lines for the citizens to make their comment by dialing 571-748-4021. Number again is 571-748-4021. And enter in 357-1690 pound. That's 357-1690 pound. As your code, unmute your phone by dialing star six. After I'm muting your phone, state your name and address and begin your comment. You will be given two minutes to speak, and then placed back on you. We'll keep the phone lines open for a few minutes. Take note, there was no phone calls coming in tonight for the public comment. We're moving along with our meeting. We'll have our township manager give a short report for the engineer's report and solicitor's report, as they are stuck in traffic, so they should be here shortly. That's what I was thinking. Okay, we could do that.
You could do ours and...
George? His is nice and short tonight. Yeah, George, go ahead and do your report, please.
I mean, I can do their, I can do, I can do their business part. I'll do mine, and then if they're not here, I just keep them. Good evening, everybody. My manager's report will be distributed later this week. We have one escrow lease so far. This is for 650 Cherry Tree. That was a subdivision land development plan that has been withdrawn. We have two real estate tax refunds, one for 808 Conchester Highway, which is the larger one. That's the Namens Creek LP Center over here. That the, that was reassessed at almost half of what the assessed value was coming out of the assessment. So it's about $16,000 refund. The other one's for property on Chichester Avenue. It's minimal. It's about $600, I believe. You all have a document in your books of your, of the appointments that are due for next week. If you, some of you have already told me who you're going to be putting up. If you have someone you'd like to let me know that you're going to be putting up for consideration, please let me know, and I'll make sure that gets on the agenda. The annually, we pass a 2020, a non-uniform wage resolution. I still need some guidance on this to be able to get this done. We need, I need to have this drawn up before the next meeting, and I'd like to get the information into the payroll system. We have yet to, we are waiting a paper document from the Teamsters to review on the tentative agreement that was reached over, over a month ago at this point. I was contacted today by a federal mediator. So if we don't get anything by next week, I'm going to see what we have to do to force them back to the table to get this done. In conjunction with that, one of the items that was tentatively agreed upon was an increase in the defined contribution rate from 4% to 5%. So this is totally up to the board whether they want to do this before or after. There's just a lot of paperwork that needs to happen. So in the event that this, that the board is raising the defined contribution rate from 4% to 5%, we need to pass a resolution to amend the plan, as well as we need to re-establish the MMO for that plan. And all that needs to get back to our pension advisor, who needs to re-file all this in a timely fashion prior to us getting our actual study. So a lot going on with that. The only other item I have in my packet is under other is we, we would like to apply for the Greenlight Go grant for the, the synchronization of the traffic signals along Chichester Avenue. This was a project that we put together last year and applied for a Traffic Technologies grant. They commented back to us that it was a very good project, and they liked our project, and we should apply for this funding for this project. However, the funding from the previous source was limited in nature. And I believe that's all I have at this point.
Anybody have anything for the manager? George, a couple of questions. For the defined contribution, we don't even have a contract signed, so are we, it's a get complicated. I know it, it holds up our audit a bit, but does it get complicated because, and back on the contract, why isn't it done? I'm not on our end, but does the mediator have, it's like...
Well, they are aware. I mean, they, they're aware. Everybody is, the, the, there's been no vote taken on it by the union. They've yet to produce a paper copy, so the business...
They're waiting for the union to bring them the copy and then vote on it.
I mean, I don't want to make it difficult for us in either direction, legal, legally or more paperwork, but why would we do the defined contribution when we don't even have a contract signed or even agreement? I mean, I, I would, my, my opinion, I would hold it. They're the ones dragging the feet, not us.
We can do that. When you do it, it's, it's for a planned year, so it's going to be retroactive to January 1st. So it's kind of like, if you do it now, you get to sit ball rolling with all those other items that need to happen after the fact. So it really is six to one, half a dozen. If, if you hold it, you're still doing it retroactively till the first of the year.
Right.
So you're, you're amending the plan for the 2023 year going forward. So from that case, it's, it's like, it's more of like...
Get it done and over with.
Yeah, it probably makes most sense to just get it done and over with the...
I, I just didn't want us to get into a bind, and we have twice as much paperwork, and then it comes to legal matter, and everybody's yelling at each other, so.
I mean, we've been waiting for it. We, you know, we, we reached everything, and, you know, when we, when we left with the union representative, the business manager, he indicated that he would have something to us within a couple of days, and that was a month and a half.
Okay. I mean, I, I'm fine. I don't know. We have the other board that just keep moving, so it doesn't, no matter what, we got to do it, if it gets done or not.
You're only talking about $16,000, you know, over the whole thing, correct? By increasing it by 1%? And it might, worse comes to worse, if they didn't accept the contract, and we went back to 4%, we'd end up getting a refund at the end of the year when they audit it, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else for the manager? If not, we'll go back to our professionals, the engineer's report. Lisa Katania, Katania Engineer.
My apologies.
Are you ready?
I, I had my apologies. I got stuck on the 195, and it was an accident at Commodore Berry Bridge, so my apologies for that. We made it. You do have a copy of my report. We have a few things that, action items for next week. The 322 bridge replacement, there are some, some signal resolutions that need to be completed. We'll have that on the agenda for next week. Al is on vacation this week. I know that he's reviewed it. I want to go through them with him to verify that everything's okay for us to, to move forward with those T160s. The same thing, the 4800 Chichester Avenue, Penn Dot signal changes. There are some changes that need to be made on, at Larkin and Chichester Avenue, at Chelsea Parkway. So we are, Al is looking at those as well, so I will have those ready for you. As far as Stormwater Project updates, we're currently about 85% complete on the Tara Circle project. I do, I just received this morning and had them revise it, a payment in the amount of $60,220.93 to Skavikio Construction. So we'll have that on the agenda. I have, my report just said we may have that invoice ready. So that has been completed. The Peach Plum Cherry Street project, that project is scheduled to start on January 9th. The first things that will happen is the trees will be removed. We had some issues with a resident questioning some of the disturbance. As it turns out, they are now requesting an additional tree be removed in their backyard. So all of that has been resolved, and, and once the trees are down, we're expecting that those, that more construction will start the following week. The residents have been kept notified as to, as to the schedule. Have a couple others. Creekside Village, we are proposing a, a meeting probably in the next week, I think. Commissioner Neary?
I know, I know they have a board meeting. The COA has a board meeting at the end of the month, so I suspect it'll be the next couple of weeks. I still have not heard from the HOA, and as I told the COA guy, I said, you know, I'm happy to do the work, but I said, I don't want to get into a contest between the two organizations, which is why I'm trying to get them all at the same, the table at the same time.
So as it stands right now, you had authorized that, that we had landscaper Jowder Landscaping come in to do, just to re, remove a small section of the berm and grade everything so that the water gets from the, the porches out to where it should have been going when Costa had done that work. We're holding off on that because there's some consternation with leaving the berm. The residents of the COA, when it removed, the HOA wants it to remain because they feel that it's a buffer for them, which there are other ways to buffer, and that they're going to be seeing additional water. So we're going to try to remediate that. I've let Jowder know he was going to do it because of the warm weather. I suggested to him that he hold off until such time as, as we have an answer. Don't want him going in and having issues after the fact. The, the Somerset project, we're waiting for information from the residents that are not going to be, have their properties worked on. I don't know that board is aware. There was another change to the plan because some of the residents did not want inlets in their backyards. Plan was changed. I want to make sure that the people that are, that have requested that change, we have something in writing from them so that at a later date, we don't have any issue with that as well. But we haven't gotten that information. I think, though, that we're probably going to have to take a look at the contract that was awarded because it's been almost a year now that we've awarded that contract. So I don't know whether we'll, we would have to rebid that once we have a, a better idea schedule-wise and what's go, of what's going on. Just some things in my report. Dunkin' Donuts is, the building is substantially complete. They, they are asking for a final inspection. They would like to open the restaurant at, in, at the end of the month. However, none of the Penn Dot improvements are completed, so the driveway and, and the, the accessibility, or excuse me, the access, try again, the deceleration acceleration lane, maybe I wasn't ready for this. The acceleration and deceleration lanes aren't in as of yet, and they want to move forward with opening the store. I'm, I made a recommendation that I would rather, they don't want to do the Penn Dot improvements till the spring. As far as, as my recommendation, that store should not open until such time as they have the appropriate improvements done on 322. We have enough issues on 322.
I have another one for you.
Oh, boy.
Mrs. Bradley called. I was talking to George about it. I was going to call Al myself, but if you're going to call him, we both don't need to. She's concerned that to get out of, her and her neighbors to get out now, they have to enter a de-acceleration lane.
I have been discussing that with Penn Dot. Penn Dot, more or less, has said that that is a developer's issue, and I haven't gotten any response from the developer as of this point. So I, I, I am aware of Mrs. Bradley's problem. It's been going on probably for a good two months now that she's been questioning that with my inspector and, and the developer's site superintendent.
If you're going to talk to Al, do you want to mention it to him, or?
He's already aware of it.
If you want to set, I don't know. I mean...
At this point, I think, and, and that was a question that we had all along with this project. Penn Dot had required that, that the developer install the improvements that are shown on their plans for the 322 widening, which puts that, that ACEL lane and the DCEL lane in the area where they're going to be coming out of their driveways. And we questioned, how is that going to transition? But Penn Dot gave them a permit for it, so we don't have much choice in the matter other than to argue the point with, with Penn Dot. I, at this point, because of that issue, because of safety along 322, my, my concerns for safety along 322, I do not believe that that store should open until everything is completed and completed properly.
Yeah, I, I do agree on that, but is, is there asphalt even available to somebody?
Um, yes, at a premium. So there's always a plant that's open.
For the state or anybody, but...
For whoever wants it, but it will be at a premium.
Especially if the weather stays like this. They'll open because a lot of contractors will be calling. But what temperature lease, they can't put blacktop down.
Usually, usually it's 40 degrees and rising for, for paving.
Well, how's the other board members feeling? I mean, I, I mean, I do agree with Lisa saying we have issues on 322. I mean, not to open up because that, Mr. Pierce, would that give us an issue legally or not?
Wouldn't necessarily be a legal issue, but it's a, it's certainly a consideration that the board should take into allowing them to open. I agree with the engineer. You know, once you start delaying for more than a couple of days, you know, if it were a couple of days or whatever, I'd say, all right, but, you know, they're talking spring. Well, spring could be another three months, and then you're going to have that store open, people coming in and out of there. I, I wouldn't, would not be my recommendation to approve that.
Okay. Oh, no, that was the proper length. And before they even got the permit for this job from Penn Dot, what, wasn't that all addressed to be able to, for the residents coming out? Or basically, the hardship was going on the builder to make the improvements for Penn Dot first?
So they thought this Dunkin' Donuts was going to open around the time that the highway was done, so I think, and these people ain't going to come on to 322. Once the highway's done, they're going to go in and out the new road that's built back behind where, you know, Hupcat Jacks used to be and all.
Right.
But to your point, and I think the, the thing that, that is baffling to me, and, and maybe I don't have all the information that was submitted to, to Penn Dot, but we had, the Wawa, for example, they had to get a letter from each resident, from each property owner for any of the improvements that were being done in front of their property, not even, not even in the right of way in front of their property. So I, I'm not sure how this got through the process without the residents actually seeing it and signing up on it through the Penn Dot process, or the HOP process.
That's it? You're good?
That's all I have.
Does anybody have anything for the engineer?
Um, go ahead.
Thank you. Lisa, we talked briefly about the crosswalk at Mount Pleasant Baptist Church, and it's not, I didn't see it anywhere on your list. Can you give me an update on that?
So there is a proposal, I believe it's somewhere, and you have that. We have a proposal from, from AF Damon, more construction, the amount of $24,000 to do that raised crosswalk. So that would be the crosswalk and, and the ADA ramps, the concrete that goes through that crosswalk. I got it probably two weeks ago. So at this point, again, we're going to, the concrete, you can do. The paving, I don't know that we could get the paving, and whether that has an effect on the, on the cost that we've received.
So Moore is going to do the project?
Moore is going to do the project through AF Damon.
Okay. But we don't know when that's going to happen? Is it going to be?
We haven't, we haven't approved, as, as a municipality, we have not given them the, the go-ahead for that $24,000 expenditure.
George, can you send that to the board, the proposal, whatever you have?
I'll send it over.
All right, thanks.
Okay. And then my other question, which is kind of related to my report, but I want to do it, ask the question now, since we're on it. With the Millennium group that's going to be doing the grants, would that be in conjunction with yourself? Are they just looking for different grants? Are they going to be working with our engineer on grants? George, because I saw, I was looking at the grant report, and one of them listed, obviously, the community development block grant. So is that something that they would be working in conjunction with the engineer on some grants?
Yeah, so, I mean, basically, every grant works as a team, so the engineer handles any component of the grant application that would be like engineering or design. The planner brings in any, any elements that would reference like planning. So I think what I could do is I could show you the community development, I could email you guys the community development block grant applications and kind of point out how everybody's working on this, 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 and this. Yeah, so we all look for grants. They look for grants. They're sending us lists of like different types of grants. They sent the fire, some firefighter stuff the other day that I'm going to get over to Ray to take a look at. Yeah, it's kind of like a team approach.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You good?
Yep.
Mr. Baacko?
I, I was just, the work schedule on Chai Avenue, they started that project. Are they going to do the whole one side, then jump across the street, or are they going to? You can give me a follow-up, see if you got the work...
Yeah, I, I have, I have the schedule, but I don't have the schedule.
A little more guy just wants to know when they're going to be in front of him. Maybe close him, he might close for, you know, I mean, he was asking me.
Yep, we'll let you know.
Anybody else have anything for the engineer? Lisa, I was just looking at your T160s. It goes up the Butler track. Is this all because of 4800, or is this part of the project for 322 and the detour and all that mess? Or a detour actually for Millard?
The, um, Millard is already... This is for the 4800.
All right, all right, thank you. If that is it, we'll move along to our solicitor's report. Michael Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a copy of my report in the file. A couple of items. We did advertise the fireworks proposal ordinance, at least in summary fashion. I did receive some comments from Mr. Neary, we'll address those. I haven't received any additional comments. It is scheduled to be determined or heard at the regular meeting. If anybody has any additional comments, questions, or changes, I'd ask that you let me know prior to, to the meeting next week. The township manager has indicated exactly what was going on with the final union contract for the highway department. I've completed the revised contracts for flow analytics for the redistricting project. I am working with our finance people here at the township. They have provided me with the expenditures that we made on the Kate's Blend project that we're seeking reimbursement for, and that I am hopeful we'll be able to get that back from the developer because they want to kind of move on and sell some of those lots. I think that they have a potential buyer in that, so I don't know, but I told them, no permits, nothing is going to be issued until such time as those funds are reimbursed to the township for the work that was done. I, I know we've been back and forth about the remote participation. The information that I've been seeing is that we are waiting for some further guidance from the Commonwealth because there have been some issues that have been raised related to ability for the public to participate in meetings. And rather than go through, set up a whole policy, I want to get a little bit more guidance from them, or at least what they are thinking before we put a final policy in. So as far as, my understanding is, we just proceed as we have been proceeding, and then we don't have to do anything from a final perspective until I want to see what their final guidance and recommendations are. Let's see what else we have here. I believe, well, we have the conditional use hearing for Lot 3A in the Namens Creek Center for the daycare. That'll be next week. The, we have the, yeah, development extension for 900 Township Line Road, as well as 801 Bethel. And other than that, everything else is under control. I also apologize for being a few minutes late. I was in the same traffic accident that Ms. Katania was. Apparently, I wasn't too far ahead of her, because I walked in right before you did.
Well, you were, you were stuck in it. Thank God. Neither one of you were in it.
Correct, correct, correct.
Anybody have, what, said it?
Yeah, that's it.
Mike, I got a letter today because I live in the ward about the Lot 3 here. It was kind of against that, that going in, and it was just signed "neighbors." I mean, can somebody put a letter out like that? They don't have to acknowledge who it is or whatever?
If they want to protest or want to be against it, then they would have to show at the meeting a letter of, you know, that working, stick without anything further. It doesn't have anything to do with anything.
Yeah, I, I just, it's, it's signed "neighbors." I just, I, I don't, I mean, it's out by the road. I don't know, you know, what residents...
I'm sure what neighbors they're talking about.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Do we, do we have to have that next week as record though? Knowing that we received that letter?
No, no, they would have to show up the conditional use here. Unless it was submitted directly to the township, you know, with, with information that who sent it? Because anybody could, a competitor for the daycare could send that.
We, we have been receiving calls from operators of other daycare facilities inquiring about the conditional use hearing. We let them know the time and the place, and I think you can feel free to show up. It's just a public.
And, and they have every right to do that.
I'll, I'll, I'll send everybody a copy tomorrow. I'll take a picture when I get home and send it to you. I'm just, because I'm anticipating there may be a room full of people, just so.
Anybody have anything for the solicitor? On the agenda though, Mike and George, I'm not sure, is we have the conditional use hearing first. How did we even get extra an extension when nothing was even been coming to us?
They submitted a land development plan, assuming that they were going to get their conditional use. So they, they haven't even been before the planning. So we just need to get that extended. They kind of went a little.
Ahead of the game. Right. Okay.
Would that be right, George?
Okay, thank you. We did the manager's report. The other thing would be moving to the commissioners. Madam Vice President, Nicole Werker.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Just a couple of things. The Library Pie fundraiser was a huge success. The pies were really good. A lot of good feedback. For those and the library is moving forward with their, you know, their plans for 2023. We did receive a, myself and George did receive a request for their allotment. So we should discuss that. How we're going to proceed with that going forward. You do have a copy of the Millennium Strategies December report from George and highlighting the applications that are due, two that are due this week and one that's due by the end of the month. And I believe George also added the Green Light Go, the Green Light Grant as well. I think that's due January 21st or something. Also shows a list of item grants that are pending final decision. So I'll have an update, I have an updated recreation report next week, but that's all I have for, for this time.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Werker? If not, we move along with Commissioner Neary.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. The, most of the reports will be available to the public in the next week or so. There is a tax collector's report. We're getting more and more information, which is really helpful. I mean, I really like this format that they are giving us. The police report is available already and we do have, and I, I mentioned it to George, because we have continuing problems with the post office, we received a letter in November that was dated August 3rd, inviting me to an Eagle Scout presentation in October. Needless to say, I wasn't there. So I've written a letter, which I'll go over with George, but I'd like to do some type of resolution in, uh, next week. Praising these two young men for, I, you know, for achieving this. I, my son is an Eagle Scout and I know what he went through to get it. And although I kind of pushed him to. And I heard a lot of parents had said, well, my son submitted his paperwork like two days before he was 18 and JP got his when he was 15 and a half. So I guess I pushed him a little too hard. But it's, it's quite an accomplishment and I, I want to recognize those two people and I want to apologize to the, for the lateness. But it's due to the ongoing problems we have with the post office. And that's all I have.
Do you want to invite them here to present it to them?
They're both in school. They're both at Penn State. So.
What's their names?
One is Woods, Andrew Mayo and Daniel Milnarsky. They're both, they're also both members of St. John Fisher. So, you know, that's why they had the ceremony there, even though there's scouts over at Green Ridge, over in Aston at that troop. They both, one lives on Bridge Road and one lives on Winding Way. So they're, they also both. I, I remember talking to the one guy, one young man last year because he was a senior at Silesia Adam because I was out campaigning and, you know, talking to him about this and, you know, it comes to pass, I completely missed it because of the fact that the, the mail didn't come through. So.
I do have a, a call into the troop leader to see if it is feasible to get them here or maybe do it remotely somewhere, somehow so we can give them the.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Neary? Not, we'll move along to Commissioner Mike Godiosso.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. As we stated earlier tonight, we have a conditional use hearing for lot 3A Namens Creek Road. It's a daycare center. 900 Township Line Road, as was also mentioned, there's an extension for that. 659 Conchester Highway zoning and board approved various, they approved, they approved variances for the project. That is the McDonald's. The list of that is on the second page of my report. Also, 4800 Conchester Avenue, I see they still have the preliminary land development application B. I would assume that that one would no longer be under review since the board made approval. Those any clarification for that?
They're, they're waiting for the appeal period to run and then, then they'll be withdrawing.
Okay. I don't have any other items. If anybody has any questions about my report, I'd be, be more than happy to answer them.
So they don't have to show up at the February 28th planning board?
I do not anticipate they would be there. I think they'll have it drawn by then because the appeal period is probably up next week.
Okay, thank you.
Just want, nice, just, just to make another note, 900 Township Line Road, the report says the applicant will be reciting at the February meeting. Just want to confirm if that's still on schedule? Or if they're going to hold?
It's on schedule as that application can be on schedule at this point. I think that's.
Only what, 15 years running?
Yeah. They indicated when we spoke earlier this week that they were unavailable for this month's meeting. So they'd like to try it next time.
So I just, I just wanted to point that out just to get the board a head up that, a heads up that that might not happen. Thank you.
Anybody have anything brought to the attention of Commissioner Godiosso? Now we'll move along to Commissioner Joe Bianco.
Thank you. George already touched on where we're at with the contract with the highway department. We'll keep you posted. The new trash routes finally started this week and I don't think there's been many hangups. I don't think it's been as bad as anybody thought. Talking to Pat the last two days, it went fairly well. He's, you know, couple, you know, snags we all expected in the beginning, but I think we're going to be all right. Sewer Authority, they have a policy they would like to see the residents follow. I broke the policy this week. I called for a resident. So I apologize if I offended anybody or whatever. So the, this SDCA would like to remind all residents of the sanitary sewer emergency procedure. If you experience a sewage backup in your home during normal business hours, Monday to Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:30, you call the authority at 610-485-6789. After business hours, weekends, holidays, whatever, you call 911. There'll be this, I guess, our police are aware or whoever is through the contact, I guess.
Anything else to be brought to the attention? George, can we make sure that's still on our web, our social media and put into the newsletter if we get one out in the spring or whenever? It's just another small thing. I'm sure everybody, the first thing you do when you have a blockage, you want to call your plumber. They have a protocol that sometimes they go out first and we just want to remind the residents. We may get five phone calls a year on this. Nothing big, nothing. We're just trying to remind people. That's all.
As long as after they call 911, they know who to contact from the sewer authority. That's.
Right. Well, yeah. Hopefully 911 has that information. Chief, when, everything's good on that? Okay. Thank you very much. Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Bianco? Now we'll go to my report, quick and easy. The emergency management report is in your file tonight. The other one's hopefully next week. Just giving up our hand. We didn't, I should have taken a moment of silence tonight. I'll do that next week. We did lose our chief medic. That was the start of our medic unit eight years ago. So we'll have a moment of silence next week for beginning of the meeting. But just to let you know, it's, I've been saving some articles. I think I threw some out to other people, but Chester County is scrambling big time, just as bad as Delaware County. They got one hospital here, one hospital there. I'll have to show you the article. It's taken them 20 minutes to even get to an, to a hospital in Chester County. They're stretched to the limit of where they could go, medics in general. So their issue is just as bad as Delaware County. Hopefully theirs will improve, but I did see the county did step up because Medic 94 out of West Chester just got some extra money I saw in the paper today or something that, to help support them. I'm hoping 2023 is a little better with Delaware County and the commissioners that we could get the county's ear on this and move along and improve our services because my big question to them a month ago was, what if, I mean, and what if Crozier's not there? And I'm sorry, that's going to put a hardship on our residents because we got one of the best medic units out there right now and almost the only medic unit at times. So it's something we really have to think about too down the road. I mean, just yesterday I counted, they responded, they were dispatched a 13 response in 24 hours. So they're busy. So other than that, that is it unless somebody has anything for me. Happy New Year, everybody, and need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.